We're good. We wait the last bit of fish. Wait a minute, I could be, I'm gonna do it to Verizon. All right, it's official, no matter what my iPhone says, it's six o'clock and we'll start this evening's meeting. Unfortunately, Mayor Claire Gunsmann is ill this evening, so I'll be running this evening's meeting. So please save your tomatoes for later. I'd like to call this meeting to order, we have a quorum, do we need to take a roll call, Tom?
I know we talked about it, I think we're good, thanks.
All right. All are present except for Claire, I'd like you now to join me in standing and for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we have the public forum, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes, and in accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. The exceptions under which the City Council may discuss and/or take action on items not appearing on the agenda are contained in Government Code Paragraph 54954.2. Public comment on any item listed below shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is permitted by the mayor or council. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time?
And mine should be a max of a minute. Al Beer, Sutter Creek, one of the volunteers at the visitor center, we had a meeting tonight. And I don't want to steal Lisa's thunder, because she'll make a report later. But one of the things we had was stats for the year, and over almost fifty-five hundred visitors came through the door this last year. So the investment of your support of the visitor center is very good. The other thing is, it was mentioned that Sutter Creek was named the most Christmasy town in Northern California. Maybe everybody knows that.
No.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand likes on Instagram, and I don't even know what Instagram is.
Where was that posted at, at Al, where was that described in? Do you know the?
It says, on Instagram, the original post got the likes, this brought crowds and whatever. And then it said, she said, I have no idea who posted it first, but the link to the Instagram, and it's on here, if anybody wants to go.
That's tremendous, thank you for your time and please pass on our gratitude to the other volunteers, that's awesome. Yeah, that would be, that would be worthy.
I forget which magazine it was, but I saw it.
Is there anyone else from the public? Tony?
I need to move this way down after Al. He didn't mention that, that he also said on there, it says people came from as far as Yosemite and all over California to the visitor center and to the town too. So I thought that was another piece that was kind of interesting. Tony Lindy, Sutter Creek, I know we have the Parade of Lights on the agenda, but I just wanted to tell a few little tidbits that maybe you guys don't know. Seventeen years ago, I brought it to the City Council to try to get permission to put on the parade. And at that time Claire's dad, Tim Murphy, was the mayor, and so that was kind of fun. And I'm sorry Claire's not here, so I could tease her about that. But it took after almost about four months for me to convince them to allow us to try it. And by then they only gave us like two months to, to put it all together. And I told them that they were lucky that I already had a lot of the pieces put together just in case. But at that time, I hadn't even gathered volunteers or anything else to even put it on and do that. And Sharon Brown was in the audience and she said, I'll help, and that's how it started. So Sharon and I put it all together and did all that, and then we grabbed my sister Barbara Putnam, and we made her do stuff with us too. So the three women not only put on that first year, but several years after that, yeah, thirteen years with Sharon, yeah. And, and my sister Barbara is still doing it, I call her Bobby, so if I say slip and say Bobby, it's same person. But we, through the years, we grabbed different people, we had the Sutter Creek Lions Club that helped a lot. And of course the Sutter Creek Police, we can't do any of that now without them. And I think we need to hire like fifteen more policemen for the night, because it gets really crazy and we're pulled all over the place. But the Sutter Creek Fire Department, I was hoping somebody was here representing them too. There's no way we could even put this on without their help anymore either, because some of the entries are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And our little streets back there, those things don't bend, so we can't get them around places. So we're staging all the big pieces at the firehouse. So that's why if you ever are down at the parade where it starts, that's why you see us feeding them in from both Gopher Flat, or even... Oh yeah, it is Gopher Flat, I forgot where I meant, Gopher Flat and from, coming from the fire department at the same time. So we pull them in according to their numbers, so that's pretty good. And without the Business Association, is anybody here from the Business Association? Greg said he's, he's gone, he's not here, he's in Hawaii, so I said, oh, rough life. But they, they are the reason we were able to even do it the first year too, because they pay for the insurance. Now they pay for the porta potties and for the transit, since we get too many cars, that's what, and that's worked out really well to have the transporting of people and stuff too. So, but they pay for that, and now I handed over all the signs to them, because I said, I gotta take that off my plate, that's too much, because there's so many signs to put out. So they take care of all that too. But I just wanted to, to let you know that there's a lot of people behind the scenes and a lot of fingers. And I know that I own when theirs gets canceled from weather or whatever, they postpone theirs and do theirs the following weekend, which is what happened this year, because that horrible storm that was going on during the day that we were all sweating. But they are able to postpone those, and I would love to know how they do that, because we have so many fingers and so many pieces involved to put it on. There, I don't know how we could ever postpone it and try to say, we'll just do it next weekend. You know, with all the people and all the things, there's no way, so it either has to go or cancel. But it has been rain or shine since day one and always will be, and in seventeen years, we've only canceled once, and that was those dangerous winds, besides COVID, I don't count COVID anymore on that. But the, so we've only had to cancel once, so that's, you know, Mother Nature's been good for us. But anyway, just wanted to give you those tidbits, because I thought those were kind of important to know.
Absolutely, thank you, Tony. Anyone else from the public?
What a not-so-optimistic comment. I live on Badger Street, and I've made the comment before, trying to get onto Main Street from Badger if there's a large pickup or an SUV or even a normal-sized car in that parking lot, parking space next to the intersection. It's almost impossible to see oncoming traffic.
About the first space in front of Sierra...
So it's on the, on the north side.
So, I mentioned it before, no one seemed to be concerned, I almost got tagged the other day. I know there's a new state law that you have to have twenty feet clearance at all crosswalks and either designated crosswalks or any area legal to cross. At any intersection where a road comes into another road, it's legal to cross, you're not jaywalking. So I would ask you to drive on Badger when a big vehicle's parked there and see for yourself? If you think it's not important, then it's fine, I guess, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Hi, City Manager's report, Tom?
Yeah, we'll definitely go check out the Badger issue.
Oh, good.
All right, it's the picture from the end of the Festival of Lights. Just a quick, quick update today, Happy New Year, happy 2025 to everybody. I think we had, all the holiday events were very successful this year, things have been relatively quiet, we didn't have any real issues in terms of the police department or the storms. You know, we had a couple of drains that got clogged up, but we've been getting leaves out and that kind of thing. We did see some, some drainage on Oremandre, which, you know, was recently repaved, so we're digging into that a little bit. There's a bunch of stones that got washed onto the roadway, just want to make sure that that's a good situation, since it's a brand-new road. And then I think staff spent a lot of time just kind of cleaning up, getting organized, we've been getting some training, we're starting to move forward on implementing this new financial software. I mean, it's, it's gonna take probably six months to do, but you know, it's moving forward. And we're also in the middle, middle of our audit. And that's also just going well, just to give you an update on kind of what's going on. And I thought today, it's sort of my normal kind of update, since December was a little slow. Just talking about kind of things that are in front of the council in the next three months. So tonight, you know, we have kind of a big items, the capital infrastructure plan, it's, we'll talk about it in more detail later tonight. We also have Bill Slunter, he wanted to be here in person, he is also not feeling great, so he's gonna be on Zoom, give you guys an update on some of the ARSA response to the water board. And, you know, we have our normal council assignments that come up, so it's something you may want to think about if you guys want to rotate or try something different. But really a lot of focus on wastewater, so we want to start to have some discussions about what potential construction would look like, what kind of, what a timeline would look like. We, we're gonna have our second annual priority planning session, which again will be a public meeting, we'll probably hold it on a Saturday again at, in a different location. And then we're talking about having a joint planning commission council session at one of your council meetings. You know, really focusing all of this kind of around this capital planning is grants and fundraising. We have our new local sales tax, I've been getting some contacts about, hey, you know, I thought it was gonna start from business owners, so need to get the word out. It doesn't start till April first, and the state should be notifying people. But we also need to start, we talked about having an oversight committee, and I think we need to discuss, again, the exact, what, what council wants to set the policy for the first year as we go into budget planning. And then, and then we'll do some of our normal budget planning activities, kind of our long-term annual comprehensive financial report, and that will feed into more detailed budget planning. So the reason I'm just laying this out, I think there's a lot particularly around wastewater that we're gonna be asking you guys to absorb and potentially be making some decisions on in the next couple of months. And that's it for my update.
Thanks, Tom, that's a, it's a full plate for both you and the staff and the council, so look forward to delving in, thank you again. At this, do we have questions or comments from the Vicki?
I have a question, is there, is there any update on the search for city clerk, I haven't seen anything on the agenda about that.
Yeah, it's really gonna focus on that starting now, I didn't really want to push really hard in December with the holidays, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Al? Was?
That, that doesn't sound right, we're not even set up with the state. Huh, okay, interesting.
Is that something that we need to get more details on in terms of how?
I'll buy something from Amazon tomorrow, see if I see it.
Anyone else, thanks, Al. So at this time, we have two very special presentations, and...
I guess you wanted to adjust the agenda order.
Yes, yeah, we're going to adjust the agenda first, as that Evan Jacobs from Animal Control was going first, and to, out of respect for our recipients. We're gonna, we're going to move you back, Evan. There we go, there's Evan, one, so if you could just wait for, thank you, all right. The, the City of Lights and our Christmas festivities would not happen without the teamwork of many, many, many people. And as Tony described, going back seventeen years, and all the people that have been involved in seventeen years, primarily you, Sharon Brown, and your sister Barbara. But it still takes that trio, and Tony, as the ringleader, we would like to not discredit anyone else and diminish their participation. But we would like to especially recognize you and your work and your leadership. So a proclamation, the City Council of the City of Sutter Creek, recognizing Tony Lindy and her Parade of Lights Committee. Whereas the City of Sutter Creek is committed to fostering a spirit of community and togetherness, and recognizes that the strength of that spirit comes from the members of our community. And whereas Tony Lindy is a powerhouse of community service, her projects and roles in the community are many, including but not limited to Rotary Club Passport to Amador, Sutter Creek Fireman's Ball, the Children's Art Show at the Amador County Fair, California Department of Fish and Wildlife Classroom Aquarium Education Program, and the Parade of Lights, which Tony Lindy brought to Sutter Creek many years ago. And whereas Tony Lindy, Barbara Putnam, and Sharon Brown organized the first Parade of Lights in 2007, fourteen parades have been held in the last seventeen years, deterred only by the COVID pandemic and extreme weather in the winter of 2022. And whereas, as the event has grown, so has the team behind the scenes. Dozens of groups and individuals work together on the parade each year. One of Tony's exemplary qualities as a community leader is her ability to lead others and encourage our participation, engagement, and volunteerism. And whereas, in a town already renowned for its singularly magical holiday atmosphere, the Parade of Lights has quickly become a mainstay of our traditions. And whereas the Parade of Lights has become a showcase for local organizations and individuals, with the only requirement for participation being, quote, "everyone is all lit up." And whereas tens of thousands of visitors have joined locals lining the streets over the years, the Parade of Lights has attracted outside media attention reflecting positively on our city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Sutter Creek that Tony Lindy has made a lasting positive impact on our community, strengthening the bonds between neighbors and creating cherished memories for all involved. The City of Sutter Creek extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Tony Lindy for her dedication to enhancing the lives of all who live in and visit our community. Our second proclamation is recognizing the Creekside Methodist Church. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Sutter Creek recognizing Creekside United Methodist Church. Whereas the City of Sutter Creek is committed to fostering a spirit of community and togetherness, and recognizes that the strength of that spirit comes from members of our community. And whereas Creekside United Methodist Church has demonstrated exceptional generosity and dedication to the enhancing the holiday experience for all in Sutter Creek. And whereas the Sutter Creek United, or excuse me, the Creekside United Methodist Church efforts include decorating the downtown, the Children's Christmas Workshop at the Sutter Creek Open House, and Las Posadas. And whereas the late Bob Fayak crafted the candy canes that adorned Main Street each season, and the Fay Fayak coordinates the hanging, and Fay coordinates the hanging of these recognizable decorations, contributing to the transformation of downtown. Sutter Creek Christmas scene is a significant part of the holiday traditions valued by our residents, our neighbors throughout the county, and thousands and thousands of visitors every year. And whereas, for decades, the Creekside United Methodist Church congregation has served the children of our community during the open house, the small group from the church miraculously transforms the parish hall to host the hundreds of local and visiting children. Thousands of cookies have been decorated and ornaments and decorations crafted and Christmas keepsakes sent home. And whereas the congregation of the Creekside United Methodist Church invites Santa Claus to the Sutter Creek Open House, thousands of children over generations have had a visit and picture with the big man, thanks to his hosts. And whereas, working alongside fellow local churches, Creekside United Methodist Church has been an integral part of welcoming all to the Las Posadas celebration. The deeply meaningful community procession has become a hallmark of holiday traditions for many families. And whereat is, is it, it is recognized that during a season of much commercialism, the contributions made by the Creekside United Methodist Church are offered to all at no cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Sutter Creek that Creekside United Methodist Church's contributions have made a lasting positive impact on our community, strengthening the bonds between neighbors and creating cherished memories for all involved. The City of Sutter Creek extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to the congregation of the Creekside United Methodist Church for their dedication to enhancing the lives of all who live in and visit our community. And do we have someone here? It really does take a community and broad effort, and we thank all, and please pass on to your members, Tony, your committee, Pastor Mark, your congregation, our gratitude, it's very, very heartfelt. So anyone else that would like to chime in on, on their work?
A thousand thanks, just great work all around. I, you know, Tony, I've known for a long, long time, and not only her work in Sutter Creek, but over at the hospice for all those years sitting on the board with us, we've just, you've got a great heart, and it's appreciated, yeah.
Our last presentation for this evening comes from Amador County Animal Control Services, and I'd like to have Evan Jacobs come.
Good evening, thank you for having me, Evan Jacobs, Director of Amador County Animal Control. Tom invited me here to give you guys a little bit of a presentation, so if you want to put the first slide, please. Just a little bit about animal control, our primary mission is to promote the well-being of both animals and the public. This includes enforcing animal-related laws, protecting animals from neglect and abuse, and ensuring the health and safety of our community. Key objective is to balance the needs of animals with public health and safety concerns, such as managing animal populations and responding to public health risks posed by a stray animal. Often people think we handle stray, or excuse me, wildlife, that's not the case. There's tri-county wildlife if an animal is injured wildlife-wise, and then there is a county trapper within, I believe it's the Ag Department, I'm not a hundred percent sure on exactly what they do trap. Some animals they will and will not, but if folks do run into a problem, they can call our office and we can connect them with that trapper to see if that's something they're able to help with. If you go ahead and I'll take the next slide, please. So animal welfare and protection, we're committed to ensuring the animals are treated humanely and receive proper care, including investigation cases of animal cruelty, neglect, or abandonment, treating stray, sick, or injured animals brought into the shelter or if we pick them up out in the field. We heavily work on educating the public, more like teachers, not like cops, on responsible pet ownership, on the importance of spaying and neutering, and then just how to report, you know, suspected abuse or neglect. Some folks go straight to the police department, but our department for the most part handles those types of, of calls. I'll take the next slide, please. And then so enforcing state and local laws, animal control officers enforce both state-level and local ordinances related to animal welfare. This includes California laws regarding animal cruelty, pet abandonment, and then public safety, where potentially dangerous dog and vicious dog cases are concerned. I will say we, anecdotally, I don't actually have the, the, the data in front of me, but we are seeing an uptick, uptick in what we call potentially dangerous and vicious dog cases. I have actually cited them in this presentation, because we do see a lot about it, and then it does make the social media rounds where folks are upset. So Food and Ag Code, the first one's Food and Ag Code 31602, that's gonna be for potentially dangerous dogs. There's what we call three tracks, track A, any dog when unprovoked on two separate occasions within a thirty-six-month period engages in any behavior that requires a defensive action by a person to prevent bodily injury when the person or the dog are off the property of the owner or keeper of the dog. So really what that boils down to, it's two strikes. So for this particular section, if someone has to take a defensive action, and it doesn't have to be the same person, it could be Person A and Person B within a thirty-six-month period while it's documented, then we'll get down to that last section you then would file. Then Section B, any dog which when unprovoked bites a person, causing a less severe injury, and then there is a definition in the Food and Ag Code of what less severe and what severe are. So primarily if a dog bites somebody unprovoked, you're just walking down the street and a dog comes after you and you get bit on the arm, and let's say it causes two puncture wounds, the county, you know, or whatever agency is in charge of their animal control would then file on just that bite. We do get a lot of people upset, they break, try to attempt to break up a dogfight, whether it's within their house or not, that is considered provoked, you are entering yourself into that issue or that, you know, let's say dogfight or, you know, scuffle, that is considered a provoked bite at that point. So just keep that in mind. And then C, which is where we do see quite a bit, especially on the social media rounds, any dog when unprovoked on two separate occasions within a thirty-six-month period has killed, seriously bitten, inflicted injury, or otherwise caused injury attacking a domestic animal off the property of the owner or keeper. Lots of folks get very upset, and rightfully so, that if their dog is seriously injured or even killed in an attack, they want animal control or that said agency to take that, you know, dog, suspect dog, take it and euthanize it. We cannot do that by law, so we do try to educate the public on that, however, it is a sensitive subject, right? It's never a fun subject, however, we do have to explain to them that it has to happen on two separate occasions. So those are the three components for what we call potentially dangerous, and so what you would do... And so what you would do as an agency is you'd go to that third section, that Food and Ag 31612. Long story short, I don't, we don't have to read that, is shall petition the Superior Court. What that infers, or what that requires, is that agency who's in charge of their animal control, we use Amador County, if we have documentation of A, B, or C, we have to file regarding that, whether we want to or not. We have to file. It's ultimately up to the judge to determine whether that dog is listed as potentially dangerous. Folks often think that the animal, if listed as potentially dangerous by the courts, automatic euthanasia. That is not the case. Think of it as doggy probation or parole, for lack of a better analogy. That's how we tell folks, and most folks will understand that. And then vicious dog case. We do see, I would say, a handful, less than five a year. And that's going to be Food and Ag Code 31603. And there's two tracks for that. Any dog when unprovoked in an aggressive manner inflicts severe injury or kills a human being. And then any dog previously determined to be currently listed as potentially dangerous after an owner or keeper has been notified of this determination includes the behavior described in the previous, and has violated. And so we can go with the Part B. If a dog is currently listed as potentially dangerous by the courts, then we can go back to court if there is a violation. And then at that point, we can ask for a dog to be destroyed. We take it very seriously. Ultimately, a judge has to make that determination. Animal control does not. I knew I just threw a lot of information about you specifically on this topic, but we do see a ton of information and a ton of citizens inquiring about this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this before moving on to the next slide, or we can wait. Keep going?
Nothing.
Okay, perfect. All right. Next, thank you, Tom. So who's responsible for animal control? There are two sections. There's Food and Ag Code 305, or excuse me, 30501. Note in the yellow, nothing in this division requires a county to enforce these provisions within the territorial limits of any city located within the county. And then there's the Health and Safety Code section. Note that I had to shrink this down. There is a quarter to a half a page of what that exact section is. But highlighted in E is any governing body of each city, city, county, or county shall maintain or provide the maintenance of an animal sheltering system with rabies control program for the purposes of carrying out and enforcing that entire section. And that is important, and why I say that is because the county does not have the resources, I know this is a touchy subject with some of the cities, to continue to provide animal control services. Currently, right now, we help provide sheltering for all of the incorporated cities. There are five of them, as I'm sure all of you are aware. And so we do provide the sheltering side. We do not provide the enforcement. If the cities need or request our assistance, and if we have the capability, we are more than happy to assist them. However, we have deferred most of that back on to the cities at this moment in time. Any questions on that before we go to the next slide?
When you say deferred back on to the city, you mean deferred the cost back on to the city, correct? Not the actual actions?
And the enforcement.
Right, okay.
So if, we'll use Sutter Creek specifically. If you guys needed, you know, there was a major cruelty case, and the police department didn't feel comfortable, or they just needed an extra, you know, the expert, so to speak. They can invite us in. We don't have any legal authority just to walk down Main Street and issue citations for dog running at large, and so we have to be invited in.
So I just, I know that each city, Sutter Creek has to have some type of animal control policies. Is that correct?
They have to, yes.
Which you're really our umbrella for that.
Correct.
But the enforcement of that is left up to each individual city?
Yes. The ones specifically with the police departments. And why we say specifically the police departments, because you already have an enforcement agency. We do, with Amador City and Plymouth, the sheriff's department is their police department. So we have talked about those cities. And if the sheriff deems animal control needing to come out, we will come out, but with the understanding that they will have to pay an invoice for those services. So those two cities specifically rely on the sheriff's department if they deem animal control needing to come out.
So would a private citizen or one of our police officers in the city Sutter Creek, let's say there's a dogfight or an abandonment, something that would be underneath your umbrella, who makes that call? Anyone can make that call to?
So if a call came to animal control specifically about, let's say, a dog abandoned, we would have them contact the police department. And they could be the first agency to make contact and determine whether, what needs to happen with that animal. And if the police department needs our assistance, then we're more than happy to come in.
Okay.
But you can take that and reverse it into, let's say, Amador City, and the police department, the sheriff's department comes. If they request us, we will come.
So is our, so our financial agreement and arrangement with animal control at the county with you, your agency, is that by case, or is there a flat fee that we pay?
Right now, it's on a per-animal intake basis. So we took, and Tom was, I think, fairly new, and I apologize, Tom, fairly new when all of this started. Myself and the previous director of GSA, which is what I fall under, he has since retired, met with all of these cities for close to a year. And then we pretty much took the data over the last, I believe, 10 years, and do not quote me exactly on this, because it has been a while. But we took the data of the average animal intake over the last 10 years for the cities. And then we divided it by the budget, less revenues, and then we all pay a per-animal cost. So if the police department, let's say, Sutter Creek, finds an animal, and they can drop it off at 123 Main Street and give it back to the owner, then you ultimately have saved yourself some money. However, if an animal comes in, let's say, as a stray, and with no identifier, we are sending the cities an invoice for those services. So we don't have a flat fee at this point. It was discussed early on, but no one really wanted to come up with an idea, so we had to eventually make a decision.
So who determines what that fee is?
We took the budget, less revenues.
Yeah, so, but each case would be a different fee?
No. So it's per-animal fee for your sheltering.
Okay. What is our?
I think you could say it's a flat per-animal fee.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure. Sorry. Okay, yes, my apologies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is a?
Yeah, there's, yes. And that includes, so an animal comes in as a stray, okay, and no owner comes forward. Your fee includes the vaccinations, the time staff is cleaning and feeding, the spay and neutering, any medical, let's say it came hit by a car, you know, you're not paying any extra for that. It's just a flat fee per-animal, whether it needs to see medical treatment, those sorts of things. So it somewhat averages out.
Why don't we let Evan finish and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. By all means. Okay, so next slide. So a little bit about our statistics. And so for fiscal year 2324, we took in 1,339 animals. The breakdown, cats, 413, dogs, 528. Others is anywhere from bats, gerbils, I mean, you name it, horses, cows, chickens, you know, there's that catch-all.
Okay, you just said chickens.
Yep.
And previously, you talked about tri-county wildlife, so I guess a chicken is a pet?
That's considered domestic, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, plenty of people, especially in our county, have them just as pets.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah. So then fiscal year 2223, little over 1,200, you can kind of see the breakdown there. And then just, I just put it in here. So for Sutter Creek, last fiscal year, we brought in 32 animals. And I primarily, this is purely anecdotal again, about 80 to 90% of all the animals that come into the shelter are going to be what we call over-the-counter. So people bring them to us at our facility versus what we called field. So if we sent an officer out, or a police department dropped it off, right? And then the previous fiscal year to that was 60 animals. Calls for service, this is strictly, you know, as a whole, I do not have a breakdown. This past year, we did a little over 1,600. In the previous year, we did a little, a little over 1,400. And so rabies and reporting. So our agency currently is in charge of reporting all of that to public health. And then public health reports it to the state. So, and they do it by calendar year. So 2023, there were 92 dog bites, and then 53 cat bites. That ranges from what we call a 10-day quarantine, which is the average, I would say 80 or 90% of the animals that we place on quarantine are what we call a 10-day quarantine. And that, for the most part, happens at the person's house. If there's an extenuating circumstances, we can bring them to the shelter for a 10-day quarantine. And then I apologize, that should say 2022 locals radio report, the next one below it. 83 dogs and 40 cats. Oh, let me back that up. So the average is 10-day. You can do a 30-day. And then you can also have up to a six-month quarantine. That is where a domestic animal, dog or cat primarily, get, come in contact with, let's, we'll just, we just had one for a skunk, right? And if it was, animal was never vaccinated, it's got to be on a six-month quarantine. And there are very strict policies for that, because we don't want that animal running at large. So our overall budget for the 2425 fiscal year is about a million and a half. Currently, as of today, we have nine full-time staff, one part-time, and then one extra hire. We do have three open positions. Two of them were on approved leave, and so we are backfilling that. And then we have about 60 active volunteers, and they do anything from off-site adoption events, walking our dogs daily, going on hikes. We have a volunteer when it's raining, because you guys have great coverage, you know, awnings. We'll take some of our larger dogs and volunteers will just walk them up and down, just to get them a little extra out of the kennels, because they primarily spend 23-plus hours, you know, in a kennel. So they do, you know, the bigger dogs, it's much stressful for them. And then, so there's no foreseen budgeting issues going into the 2526 budget year. We do see some small increases for salaries, and that's negotiated through the unions, and then some supplies. And then please note that we are going to be losing one office position come next fiscal year. So we will be down to eight full-time, one part-time, and then one extra hire. And then last slide, some of our successes and some of our challenges. So I pride myself with our staff of, our overall live release rate is about 93.5%. Dogs are 92, cats are 96. This is something called excluding owner surrender euthanases. So the reporting, standard reporting, you do not have to include those numbers, because we're taking in an animal specifically for euthanasia. And primarily what our department does, we don't do a lot, it's primarily behavior. Most vets nowadays do not euthanize aggressive, specifically dogs, but cats in some incidents, do not euthanize for behavior problems, because they deem that animal to be healthy. So we will vet that pretty closely, just to verify that. But most, so just keep that in mind. And then Rusty's Fund. It's a small nonprofit that volunteers many, many years ago, started fundraising for animals that need surgery, that my budget just won't allow. And so it has grown over the years, and they help pay for surgeries. We call them grant funds. There's a local rescue that takes dogs into what we call the prison program at Mule Creek. And so she's a very brand-new rescue, just starting, doesn't have a lot of money. So we will donate, Rusty's Fund, I should say, will donate to her for the ongoing care of that animal instead of having to euthanize, right? And so Rusty's Fund helps where my just budget doesn't allow. And then some of the challenges, we have had a few new hires. And I'll be frank, it is very hard to find qualified folks specifically in the animal world, in the animal welfare world up here. So there is a big learning curve. And so some of them have made it, some of them have not. And then another thing is educating the public on what animal control does versus what the cities are required to do. So there is a big learning curve in education on that front. So we're always trying to figure out ways of letting the public know and helping them in best we can. So, thank you. Any questions?
Council?
Yeah, I have a question. If you want to start.
No, go ahead.
So first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight, giving the presentation. And say, prefaced by saying, I think it makes total sense that we partner with the county to provide these services. That being said, I do have some questions in regards to determination of when Sutter Creek is liable. Can you talk about how that is determined? Specifically, how do you determine that the animal came from Sutter Creek, or that the owner of the animal lives in Sutter Creek, that sort of thing?
So some of it is purely based on word, right? They say they found it on Main Street, you know. If there's no other factors that we can't figure out, we're just going to have to take their word. However, there, we do take in IDs, and so that report goes to the police chief specifically, actually, all of the cities.
Does every time you take in an animal and determine that it's Sutter Creek, was the Sutter Creek PD involved in that process?
Not if they're over-the-counter. So we'll generate a monthly report. Let's say you bring in five animals. We'll get IDs from everybody we take in animals from. And let's say it was an owner surrender specifically, we'll make sure we document that address. I don't know Sutter Creek that well, so that's why?
Okay, so somebody just arrives, say I live here in Sutter Creek, and I have found an animal?
Yep.
I don't necessarily have to contact Sutter Creek PD. I could go take it straight up to the airport to your office.
Correct. Yes.
And that's an over-the-counter?
Yeah, that's an over-the-counter, yes.
Okay.
And if you say you found it in Sutter Creek, you say it's a Sutter Creek dog?
Well, we'll ask cross streets, right? We've vet that to some degree. You know, I found it on Main Street, and I don't know another street. But, you know, we're going to basically look, I'm not from here. I've only been with the county for two and a half years. Most of my staff has grown up within the county, so they're going to have a better baseline of that. And all fails, we will Google search that just to verify. Is it in the county on a street, or is it in, within the city limits? Especially that's where we get that cross street, just to verify. And then if all fails, we will look at GIS to verify, to see, you know, the closest match. So we do know, full transparency, we do know people lie to us every day. However, if we have no proof, you know, we have to go to some degree on their word. And, you know.
Okay, so then let's take two Sutter Creek instances.
Yep.
Over-the-counter, someone brings in, they found a dog. The dog is, just seems to be lost, it's healthy, they bring it in. And you determine, what's our flat fee for that?
It's about $865.
$800, that's a lot of money. The other animal, another, somebody else brings in an animal, and it needs medical care, vet.
Yep.
Is that $865?
Yes. We will, the county will then, my department will then take it to the vet, and you guys won't be?
What if that dog needs, has a broken leg and needs $3,000 worth of veterinary care?
That's where Rusty's Fund comes in. So the county, we will pitch in some, but that's where we rely heavily on Rusty's Fund, that nonprofit that supports us, because if it's treatable and we have the money, great. But if it's got a completely broken back and it's a $10,000 cost, you know, and it's got months or years of rehabilitation, that's something we wouldn't be able to treat.
I see.
Nor spend that kind of resources.
But Evan, I think it's fair to say that 860 is kind of an average of normal care. So if it needed a minor vet, you guys would cover that?
Yes, correct. And that includes your spay neuter. I have a perfect example. If we got 100-pound female dog intact, my cost is 710 or 65, don't quote me, it's over $700 with one vet. And that's just the spay. And that's just the spay, you know? So there's a multitude of variables, um, with this.
Right. And and I'm not not trying to put you on the spot, but you can understand, uh, these costs, uh, as you well know, they they add up.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, we have a tight budget too, so that's where my concern comes from.
Correct. Well, that's why we take their IDs. And so we'll marry that up with, hey, I found it right in front of my house on the twenty-thousand block of, you know, Shakridge Road. We know that is the county versus, though they might use a Sutter Creek city address. Or, you know, saying they live in Sutter Creek, but we already know, you know, if it's that high up, twenty-thousand block of of Shakridge Road, we know that's already county. But that's why we also, uh, require a driver's license or some sort of ID.
If someone brings in, uh, an animal that you call an over the counter. Do you ever bill that person for services?
No, we would never get folks to 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 pay for that.
People would probably stop bringing.
Yeah, they would just let them go.
And if if, uh, if the Sutter Creek PD calls and says, there's a dog, uh, please, can you come, you, it's a potentially vicious dog, uh, we need it, we need someone with that expertise with a snare or glove, whatever it takes to capture that. That's eight hundred and sixty-five dollars also?
No, that that's for the animal that we brought in. If you are requesting our assistance for what we would call field services or enforcement services, then we would bill direct on on the time that an officer was out there, so it's two, two separate things.
But is that in?
It would be the eight hundred and sixty-five plus those services?
Correct, if the animal was brought in to to, uh, the shelter.
If one of your officers goes out in the field to to capture that animal?
We would not do that unless invited in so by either the city or the police department, whoever is, whoever has that authority to invite us in.
Okay.
So is the eight hundred and sixty, that's based on an average? Cause I could understand someone can bring in an abandoned cat.
Yes.
Or somebody calls in, you come out, pick up an abandoned cat, that's eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Correct.
But if someone.
But if. But you might, we might be thinking along the same line. But somebody calls the next day or two days later saying, oh, I just heard my friend or so-and-so turned into a cat, that cat's mine. Is that money then refunded back to the city?
No.
That billing?
No.
Even though there's no sheltering really, services provided, that cat wasn't brought in on a service call.
On the averages, so the the flat fee is based on averages. So, y-yes, relatively, it is inexpensive for two days to then take care of an animal and then what we call return to owner. You know, Mrs. Smith comes and picks up her cat. However, the ones that don't then have to be, everything is vaccinated, um, it's cared for.
Correct.
Needs to be spayed and neutered and those sorts of things. So some animals may require that, some animals may not.
It's it's just a little hard on this end to swallow personally, that someone, you pick up a a cat that's abandoned or someone brings it in, that's eight hundred and sixty dollars for for minimal sheltering services. That's, uh, for the average.
If it were less, Julia, if I understand, if if it were less, if they made an exception, then the overall rate would go up to compensate for it.
Well, I'm just trying to see if there is any, I guess what I'm trying to get at is one also, if there could be a scale of services. Not just one eight hundred and sixty-dollar fee, no matter what. Whether it's a healthy cat that's returned to an owner twenty-four hours later or a high necessity animal in terms of sheltering and care, neutering, blah, blah, blah. Has there been any consideration of some type of scale of of billing rather than just a flat fee?
At this point, no, again, previously, uh, myself and my my, uh, old boss sat down with at least specifically the three police chiefs to figure out that for close to a year, and nothing was coming to a head. And we knew budgets were coming up for the this current fiscal year. So we had to make it a determination, and then that's how our determination has been. So we can definitely explore that. However, um, that would need to be talked out.
And I I don't want to demure your efforts or, you know, unnecessary, not taking this personally. But just trying to find a way that's more palatable and maybe realistic for cities.
Right.
To be able to provide, you know, reimbursement to you, but on a fair scale.
Right.
Is, I understand, there, is there a a cap?
Yes, so there was a cap made, and so we took the averages, so, and I don't have that. But we'll say sixty because the last fiscal year was sixty animals. So let's say we hit the sixty, uh, animal mark come September, you know, of a fiscal year. Anything moving forward, if we took an additional fifteen or twenty-five, so that way you guys could budget, you know, cities could budget appropriately. The county was going to incur those costs.
But there is a, there is a cap?
Yes, current, and it for this fiscal year, yes.
Okay.
I don't foresee that changing, however, I can't make, obviously make any guarantees. But yes, there is a current cap at this moment. And also, if you don't bring in the total amount, you know, for of animals, let's say it was sixty and you only brought in the thirty. The city now, you know, has saved the average for for thirty animals versus, let's say, you know, a one yearly fee that encompasses animal sheltering or animal sheltering and enforcement. So it, there's several ways to to go about.
Okay.
And, oh. One, one more question?
Go ahead.
This is fairly new, this, how how long have we been under this, the current, uh, system?
Well, this is the.
Where the cities are being.
This fiscal year.
Just started.
Yes, just started.
This fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Now, previous, yeah, about previous, you know, we'll say a year, about twelve to to sixteen months. Well, you know, prior, when I started, um, we didn't charge you for animal intake. However, if an animal did come in injured, we would send the cities an invoice. Because my my department just doesn't have the capacity to care for city animals when in that food and ag and health and safety code specifically says, when you're incorporated, you know, this, it does, that responsibility does fall on to to those cities. And so, yes, this fiscal year is when you've been given, I'll say, on a per animal basis.
I'm just curious then, if we have any data on what the percentage of your budget is covered by the cities versus the total budget?
So it was roughly twenty-five percent of the cities are the animals brought in. So if we took a hundred animals, about twenty-five come from all five incorporated cities. And so that's where we came with that, that number.
And so just for my own clarification, Tom, and this is more of a budgeting question, but it pertains to what we're talking about. When we were talking about animal control months ago, I think a number was thrown around fifty thousand bucks or something like that. Was that based on a projection of usage?
I I think the cap is, yeah, somewhere in the forty thousand, something range.
Okay, because I misunderstood it at that point, that it was of actual fees. So I think it's interesting and and it's good news, as far as I'm concerned, to hear that it's per, you know, utilization and and that type of thing and per use. Because there are ways we can impact that.
We can, but again, this is over the counter, so we don't have a lot of control of.
Right, I understand. But even just communication and stuff like that, there's ways to, you know, let the citizens know.
Susan, did you have any questions? No. Thank you, Evan.
Alrighty, thank you guys.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Any questions, we appreciate that, and hopefully didn't get roasted too much, oh.
You know, some of the concerns you have is the county pushing more and more costs over the city, obviously. If if you look, I I gave the example the the other, uh, some meetings ago on how much proper, how much money you get from a seven hundred thousand dollar home in Sutter Creek, you get two hundred and eighty dollars in property tax. The county gets nine hundred and eighty for that same home. They get fourteen percent of the property tax in the city limits. The city gets four percent. So a lot of these numbers were generated a long time ago when maybe the, at that time, the county probably had a hospital they had to manage and stuff, they don't have to do that anymore. So, I mean, a lot of your questions of, you know, what what the county's charging for stuff, you need to sit down with supervisors that represent our area and say, are you being fair? You know, because you are getting a pretty good chunk of the property tax in the city of Sutter Creek.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else from the public? Good, thank you, Evan. Moving on, um, we have the minutes to be approved from the meeting from December sixteenth. Counsel, do we have, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Unless somebody has comments, I'd move to approve.
It's been moved by our second.
Second.
It's been moved by Dan Riordan, seconded by Susan Feis to approve the minutes, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay? Motion passes. Consent agenda, there do not, does not seem to be any items on the consent agenda. So we're going to move on to ordinance and public hearing, which also there are none. Our administrative agenda, item A, the water balance responses to the water board.
Yeah, so I'll start it off, and then we have our consultant, Bill Slunter, on Zoom. So like I said in my city manager update, we've got a lot of upcoming work on wastewater. And tonight's item is an update on a demand order we got from the regional water board. But it's also an opportunity, I think, for everybody, uh, to really understand how the ARSA system works and some of the challenges there. You know, uh, Councilmember Swift and Mayor Gunzelman have been on the ARSA board, but the other three of you haven't, so. Bill and Hydro Sciences have worked with the city in the past, they helped do our master planning document. So, um, I think Bill's pretty well-versed in our system. And, um, I guess the other thing you'll see when we get into the CIP is that our current wastewater plant really hasn't been at full operation for many years. I mean, there's a lot of broken equipment and things. So I I will turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I'm going to share my screen and start a little presentation.
You want me to do it or you want me to do it?
Oh, I I've got it ready to go here. Okay, now let's see here, this works. Okay, it'll be coming up. Can you all see it okay?
Something's happening. There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Great, so thank you for that introduction, Tom. Pleased to present to you tonight, sorry I couldn't be there in person. But hopefully have an opportunity in the future. This will be an update on the water board compliance effort with thirteen to sixty-seven letters. These are water code orders, and I'll give you a little overview of what they are and what what their purpose is. So, um, on the fourteenth of August, um, ARSA and the other dischargers holding permits related to the ARSA system or downstream of the ARSA system all received these two orders. They received an individual order and a joint order. So the ARSA individual order is shown on the left, naming city of Ione, ARSA, and Port Look International, which is Castle Oaks Golf Course. And then a joint order went out to those three as well as, um, Jackson Rancheria, who has some land that is being used for spray in Ione, CDF and CDCR. So all of the entities related to the ARSA system or the disposal of effluent out of the ARSA system. These were meant to be addressed in two steps, and I I have a schedule, excuse me, a scheduled slide coming up to kind of explain the sequence of things. So, um, before I get any further into those orders, this is just a refresher as to how the ARSA system and the related entities are interconnected. This normally looks like a portrait-oriented figure, I broke it up left and right to fit it on a slide, and it links together through this dash line. But, um, from Sutter Creek's point of view, it starts with, uh, the sanitary sewer users in Sutter Creek, Martell and Amador City, who all discharge wastewater to the city of Sutter Creek Secondary Treatment Plant, where it's treated to secondary standards and continues on down the pipeline to Henderson Reservoir. There is an outlet to Bowers Ranch for some disposal on forty acres. There's another one on Hoskins Ranch, uh, just downstream of the reservoir, sixty additional acres of sprayfield disposal. Uh, there is a makeup water connection, you have raw water rights from Sutter Creek if there's ever a need for supplemental water, but this has not been used in a number of years. Needs some, some physical upgrades, and the creek does not always have supplies, so we show this as a dash line. Um, out of Henderson, after supplying whatever Hoskins is is needing, the flow will continue to Preston Forbay and then Preston Reservoir. Um, and this kind of represents the endpoint of the ARSA system as bounded by this, uh, dash line here. Preston Reservoir has two hundred and thirty-five acre feet of usable storage, and Henderson is three hundred and ninety-two. So these two reservoirs combined provide the ARSA system storage. Out of Preston, we supply to the Castle Oaks Golf Course via the tertiary wastewater treatment plant, uh, Castle Oaks Water Reclamation Facility. So all the water that goes to Castle Oaks needs to be filtered to tertiary levels and disinfected, and then it can be applied to the golf course. The plant is old and its backwash rates are fairly high, it's somewhat inefficient. So twenty percent of the water that goes through this plant becomes a waste stream, filter backwash that needs to go to the city of Ione's plant for treatment. The remainder goes to the golf course. Uh, Mule Creek has its own secondary plant, uh, five hundred and twenty-five acre foot reservoir and sprayfields. And I'll talk later about what their individual water balance shows regarding the capacity of this. But there is a discharge of about two hundred and eighty-three acre feet per year on average to the ARSA system via this connection. They now typically use this connection, they do not use the Preston Reservoir storage that go in downstream of it. City of Ione sewer users go to their plant. They have a a city field and a town field, this one is on Jackson Rancheria land that they dispose to, and then they have percolation ponds next to Dry Creek that they go to when they have to, there is a regulatory issue there, they're working through the future of this, these ponds and their ability to percolate as as a form of disposal is in question currently. Uh, the city also takes backwash from Amador Water Agency. And there is another sprayfield identified through Jackson Rancheria that might get used in the future, but but it's not yet in use. So this is the ARSA system and the interconnections with CDCR and with city of Ione that are the subject of, um, this compliance effort. So what, yes.
Okay, um, if there are just technical questions, maybe you could take those as we go, because it's.
Sure.
I just want to, I don't know if you guys have questions?
Yeah, I I I do, thank you, Bill, for being there, this is Jim Swift. What are the constituents in the backwash from the, uh, tertiary plant? Are they just, is it, uh, is there a concentration of constituents or is it just, uh, like any other water that comes into the, into their secondary plant?
Um, it's basically turbidity, you know, cloudiness that the, your treatment plant doesn't remove because it doesn't have a filter. So the effluent that heads down the pipe has some biological matter and inorganic matter left in it. The treatment plant provides a good amount of oxidation to reduce, you know, the organics, but there's going to be, you know, small particles that the sand filters will remove, and then you. And then you have to reverse flush those filters on, these are continuous backwash filters. So they're constantly treating and they're constantly backwashing as they turn over. And so that is a waste stream of water carrying out all of that, all of those particulates. They do need to go to a wastewater plant to to be further treated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I know it's a pretty complex figure. There's a lot of parts to it, including some that are rarely used or some that are future. We we did a number of rounds on this figure and interacted with the other parties to make sure everybody was in agreement with exactly what the state of the system is today.
Could I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the amateur water agency sends backwash water to Ione's treatment plant?
Correct.
And they're creating it because why?
Well, that's from their water treatment plant, potable water treatment.
Treatment plant. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if Bill knows. I think AWA struck an agreement with a mine up there and they're going to send that water there instead, which will help Ione and eliminate that stream.
Because basically there's, that's not contaminated water from the, their sand filters, correct? I mean, it's just, they're removing solid particles from their water in their treatment process.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of what's in it, but yeah.
Okay. It's obviously
I mean, it's drinking water sludge. It it could have some background concentrations of constituents that limit its disposal. Even pulling out of a stream, you can pick up metals and other things. So, you know, they would just have to work out a disposal method that that have to do water analysis and then make sure that wherever they're sending it is compatible with those numbers.
Okay.
So the next slide talks about what these letters are. What does 13267 even mean? It's a, it's a water code that enables the water board to basically go to a permittee, a permit holder, and ask them to do a study or provide data that they need in order to issue a new permit or verify compliance or what have you. So the reasons they issued these letters, they stated in, you know, the introduction of these, these letters themselves and also in a a meeting that we had with them. They feel that the existing permits, including the ARSA permit, are out of date and not reflective of the true and current system capacities. They cite lack of capacity as an ongoing reason why there have been compliance issues with managing the water, particularly in wet years. The purpose of the individual order, which is number three here, is to kind of for each permit holder to look at their system in a silo. So disregarding Mule Creek's input and just running the calculations on your flows and your storage and your disposal area. And when I say your, I mean ARSA, so all the parties to the ARSA permit, including Ione and and Castle Oaks. So excluding Mule Creek, we run a set of calculations to determine how storage and disposal is managed in a wet year and an average year. And then we look at whether there is deficient capacity or available unused capacity in this first step, which is in item three. And then number four is, after that is concluded, the water boards reviewed them and weighed in on them. Then they're looking to the parties, the the full group of parties, to indicate whether they want to continue to go forward with a joint system, which includes Mule Creek sending effluent to the system. And if so, then we need to work together to establish a joint water balance, bring our numbers together, include the Mule Creek flows and and Ione's growth and all the other factors in play, and then determine whether we have enough capacity for that or whether we have a shortfall. And then I'm sure what would follow from that is a timed schedule order to come up with a plan to address any shortfalls.
What is the timeline for number four?
So I have, I do have a slide for that. I think it's just a couple down. I have a whole table I'll show you.
I can wait. Thank you.
And so the letter requires that, the the submittal that we just turned in for the individual order requires that we first tabulate current and forecasted flows, looking at five years, early limited period. We work out our disposal acreages and agronomic rates. And we can, and we perform this water balance calculation under an average rainfall year and under 100 RP, which means a 100 year return period rainfall. Approaching, I think, 36 or 40 inches. I don't remember the number, but a pretty good rainfall in your area. And we need to make, you know, we need to understand how water is moved and stored and whether we run out of capacity in that situation. The, there's a series of attachments to back up the calculations, including certified or signed memos and data from Ione and Port Look International, along with our own certification that the numbers are true and correct. We need to account for any changes to the collection system, treatment plant and disposal features or their operation planned over the next five years. So not just how flows are going to increase, but also are we changing anything? And then determine if we have effluent that is exceeding the capacity of the system. So that's generally what the steps are for each one of these. And then here's the schedule. So we're actually pretty far along, but we're about to embark on the most difficult step. So rolling back to the beginning, the parties were all notified on June 28th that the water board planned to issue these letters and and require us all to do this work. They provided draft letters on June 28th. They called a meeting at the water board on July 16th. All the parties were represented. Between that and a letter that we sent back on the 30th, we all provided feedback on the draft letters, particularly the schedule or submittal of each of these documents to make sure there was enough time. The water board incorporated that feedback and issued the final official letters on August 14th, and that started the clock. We had a status meeting on October 30th as we were working on our individual balances. And then we submitted our individual balance on December 13th. The water board's currently reviewing those and they they received one from ARSA, one from CDCR, and one from Ione. And we have copies of all of those that we've looked at. And there's a meeting on January 27th, the water board, to receive the board's comments on these individual memo, memos. In the meantime, we're getting started on the joint water balance effort, which is, these are due on May 1st. And preceding that, there needs to be a signed statement of intent from each party that we do plan to pursue a joint water balance and a joint solution. There is, they gave us the opportunity to say, no, we're going to go it alone instead or choose to stay on the path of a joint system, at least for now. And so looks like, you know, we had an informal meeting with the parties a few weeks ago and everyone was indicating their intent to move forward with a joint water balance effort. So we do expect that everyone would be submitting a letter to that effect by February 1st.
So yeah, that time, that timeline, Tom is just, I'm just trying to get my head around it now because on the one hand, I'm hearing, okay, we're saying we're staying put basically with the ARSA gang for for this project here. How or does that impact our own individual efforts and what we've been talking about?
No, so again, we got these orders that we had to comply with. And it's for the current system. And Bill will go into, like, we had to make some assumptions on future growth.
Okay.
And again, in terms of the water board, we were pretty conservative.
Okay.
But this is totally separate from what we do as a city in the next five to 10 years.
This just gets this situation handled with the state. And really, the only way to do it is to continue to report as if we're all together because that's the information we have. Yeah?
That is the system we have.
Yeah, exactly.
It it just keeps our options open, to be honest.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I understood. Thank you.
And then the Mule Creek system is part of this problem or we respond to it independent of that usage?
Yeah, so this first, these first responses were everybody individually.
But is Mule Creek included in?
They had to do theirs. And they've been meeting with us and we've had several other meetings just to make sure everybody's working together. But then this next one on the May 1st is the single joint combined water balance that all three parties participated.
Do I understand that Mule Creek really has the greatest role or storage? I don't know if that's the right term.
He's going to go into like the numbers here.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions about the schedule? I'll give a summary as to how ARSA's individual water balance results shook out. So first of all, the flows, this is showing the average dry weather flow today and what we projected out for 2029, so modest growth. But at the same time, the city is undertaking an effort to reduce infiltration and inflow, which is basically rainwater leaking and groundwater leaking into sewer pipes and increasing the flow into the ARSA system and the treatment plant. This is a significant value. The the system is old, but the city is undertaking an effort to identify and and identify areas where this is happening and work towards repairs to reduce it. And a Corallo memo was provided to us that had sort of a low and high range projection for how much flow would be reduced, I and I would be reduced by these projects. And we took, I believe, a modest middle ground. And and what that ended up meaning is our five year projection for flow is actually a little lower than today, even though there's some growth that is more than offset by I and I reduction in this projection. This is the, the results table out of our memo. There's a lot going on here and I'll kind of focus you in on what what matters most. But it gives you a sense of, a water balance is a fairly complex calculation that looks at how much wastewater, treated wastewater you're dealing with, how much rainfall and runoff actually gets into the system, either direct rainfall on the the storage ponds or infiltration, et cetera. And then it looks at irrigation demands that we need to address. It looks at volumes in the reservoirs, what what maximum volume comes out of the calculation. You're you're filling in the winter. You don't want to over top. You want to have enough storage to get through the winter. And then when the demands, the, when you can start applying water, when there's an agricultural demand, then then you can draw that reservoir down so that it's empty at the end of the year. That's basically at the end of the water year. So that's basically the idea of what this balance does. It also looks at evaporation and percolation if it applies. And it's got all of the the application areas, Bowers, Hoskins, Castle Oaks, all itemized as demands. The bottom line is when we look five years out, and this is after calibration effort against real data, we do show if we ignore Mule Creek's input entirely and just look at the individual ARSA system, we do have spare capacity equaling these amounts. However, as you'll see in the subsequent slides, what Mule Creek needs to dispose of in the system is quite a bit larger than those numbers. So summarizing the findings, including the certified flows, disposal capacities and treatment rates for Ione and Castle Oaks. And without Mule Creek flows, the ARSA system does have adequate capacity under all the rainfall scenarios. Though I will caution, if we didn't have Mule Creek flow, we might have a shortfall of supply for Castle Oaks some of the time in a dry year. This exercise doesn't include running a unusually dry year of rainfall scenario. And and when we get into planning our options, we should do that and look at our commitments to serve water to the users. So that is a kind of the other side of the coin that I just wanted to mention. But for now, we're focusing on what the water board has asked us to do, which is really look at worst case capacity, shortfalls. The results say that we have between 78 and 185 acre feet per year of unmet irrigation demand. We could take additional water to that amount. However, that is not sufficient for Mule Creek State Prison contractual discharges. This is the agreement between the parties that provides or allocates 350 acre feet per year to Mule Creek. Their typical discharges have been more like 283. We don't have enough for that either. And growth of population at the prison or growth in Ione would not fit into this as well. And all of this is contingent upon, sorry, the water board agreeing with our our memos that we submitted. They may have comments. The numbers may change. We're pretty confident in our numbers, but it's just a matter of method and assumptions. So, you know, a small disclaimer there that we're not, those memos are not final until we've addressed their comments. We did receive a copy of Mule Creek's water balance. We've taken a look at it. Their situation's a little more complex. I'm going to give an overview of of what it says. And this will give you a feel for where we're heading next with the joint water balance, figuring out how to meld these two systems together. So their current flows, wastewater flows are 0.38 million gallons per day. But they looked at a bunch of flow scenarios and this really stems from the fact that their population is determined at state level and the the individuals we're dealing with are pretty much handed down what the population is going to be. And that's not really something they have any say over, so they have to look at worst case. They looked out five years and project the flow to go from 0.38 to 0.54. A pretty good jump there. And then if they were to max out these two facilities to maximum population, that flow would go to this number. And if they utilize their full permitted treatment capacity would go to 0.74. So when we talk about joint water balance and looking at the future, we'll have to have a conversation with them about, you know, what we're designing around in terms of flow. This is the infrastructure they have on site. They have 155 million gallon reservoir. They have a 200 acre land application area. This was, used to be larger until the recent expansion, they used up some of that field. But they did identify a 61 acre expansion area that they could turn into additional land application area. But they do, they do look at options to use that in their individual water balance, but make no commitment about actually doing that. And then, of course, they have the ARSA agreement and the 350 acre foot allocation there. And then on the right is just their historical disposal rates. I think this is a, it's like a five year average month by month. And that's the 283 acre feet that they're typically sending to ARSA. And so their, their, their results, I've presented them for the three flow scenarios. The first test case is if they handled all of their water on site with their existing infrastructure and did not send anything to ARSA. The findings on all three of those flows scenarios is that they cannot make it through a very wet year, followed by an average year and end up with an empty reservoir, which is what they're required to do. They have an excess in storage that they have to deal with. So that's not compliant in that test case. They can bring on the, they can build the exist, the additional 61 acres of additional land application area, and that gets them closer. But if you look at the memo, what it says is there's still some carryover storage at the end of the water year, the second year in their model that is that is in excess of what it should be, which is essentially a dry reservoir ready for the next winter. Once they bring in the ARSA connection, then they show that they are compliant. The problem being that the the best case is 283 acre feet, which is in excess of what our calculations say we can take. And then as they look at the higher flow scenarios, they actually need the entire contractual allocation of 350, plus they need to build that land application area, that additional 61 acres. They do also talk in their report about options that they could build more infrastructure on their site and other reservoir and or more sprayfields. Those are, of course, expensive propositions for anyone, and I'm sure that's something they're weighing out. And then, of course, their memo has not been through water board review yet either. So we're going to learn about where the water board stands with respect to these memos and at the end of the month, January 27th, I believe. So this is a summary of where we stand and what's next. So to recap here, we can, our model says we can take this much additional flow, 78 to 185. But Mule Creek for across the scenarios is looking at having to send us 283 to 350. So more than double. So more than double. And or build a lot of expensive infrastructure on their site, or possibly some combination. Ione did their own water balance, sorry. As as long as they can continue to use their percolation beds, they're in okay shape. But that, they're in the middle of a regulatory process on their treatment plant and their percolation beds. These are two ponds at their treatment plant that percolate into the groundwater, it's ponds six and seven. And they're right next to Dry Creek, and the concern that the Water Board has, especially with Pond Six, which is right next to the creek, Pond Seven is a little farther. Pond Six, if you percolate into the ground, it, you know, the belief is it could go straight into the creek. And it's basically an indirect surface water discharge, which should be a different permit. And it's a much stricter permit, and it would require treatment plant upgrades. So they're working with the Water Board to try to justify at least using Pond Seven going forward. If they lose both, if they have to line both, then they have a pretty big problem they need to solve to to find, you know, a lot more sprayfield acreage or some other way to get rid of that water. They have indicated to us that they may need some capacity at the reclamation facility in the future. Currently, they don't use any of it, they just take a backwash and they treat it, which uses up some of their own capacity. And the reclamation facility is aging, the the backwash rate is pretty high, it should be closer to 10 or 12%. So there's some work to be done there and possibly some efficiency to be gained. I mentioned that CDCR verbally indicated they intend to participate in the joint water balance. And we're starting that effort and we'll we'll be submitting it on May 1st, 2025. And of course, before that, at the beginning of February, we need to submit a letter of intent. And that's, that's the entire presentation, so I look forward to answering your questions.
I think I just have a, I have a more of a process question. And it, it, it really is, when the Water Board convenes this meeting in May, I think, or whatever, is it part of their deal to take all this data and say, here's what we think you ought to do?
They are regulators, they don't, they're not going to give advice. And they've already told us that, you know, we have these old permits, they want to reissue new permits to everybody.
Right.
So that's where we get to, you know, the reason our existing plant can operate with half the equipment broken is because we have such an old permit. So even if nothing changed, we will probably have to do more work to comply with a new permit.
Right. So they're just going to get real clear on what the requirements are and how we solve it is.
And I think, you know, over the years, so they're just tired of all this squabbling between Ione and us and Mule Creek. And they're like, you guys put the numbers together.
Yeah.
You know, at the same time, Mule Creek is saying they have the right to 350, that agreement says we have the right to 300. It's just, it's more than the golf course can take.
Exactly.
It's right. To hear that Mule Creek apparently is cooperating, because it seems like they're a big cardholder in all this with with the amount of space, but they also have the biggest need in terms of being able to.
I don't know if I'd say it's the biggest need, I mean, our need is pretty large as well.
No, but I mean, as far as. Yeah, that's, that if they're willing to cooperate, they have the most to be able to give, but also the most to lose.
Yeah, and again, you have this, you have one state agency squabbling with another state agency, so. I don't want to overspeak, but you know, they don't necessarily listen to the Water Board as much as cities do.
But they have, they have the capacity to help Sutter Creek and Ione out. But they also need that capacity for their own needs, is that correct? Because they have the largest.
I mean, we had the impression, and Bill, you can comment on this, it gets, kind of midway, we thought it sounded like maybe they were going to try to go their own way. But it seemed like with their analysis, they they can't get there.
That's how it sounds, I think ultimately it'll be a business case for them, like it will be for everyone else. But to go their own way and build a reservoir, add more storage and or more sprayfield is both going to consume land and be a pretty costly endeavor. Whereas to join, to stay in a joint system, it's a little hard to say, there's a lot of costs wrapped up in that too. In the short term, it might just be some more spray area, but in the long term, we have some very aging infrastructure to deal with. Henderson is on state land, there's a lot of other issues long term. I think in the short term, there might be some somewhat palatable solutions, in the long term, it starts to get a bit tenuous.
Bill, the diagram that you had that showed the the water flow, the ARSA system, I think it was like the third or fourth page, yes. That, that actually helped explain and visualize this whole process. Is there any way, Tom, Dan, we could?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send the whole presentation.
Okay.
Everybody.
Yeah, that's, that was really helpful.
Yeah.
And there's a cleaner version of this in the memo that just fits on a page, just goes top down. So, you know, if you needed a copy of the 13267 letter response, the the memo we submitted, it's in there as well.
And I, I think this is finally an accurate diagram, the Water Board did not have the diagram, nobody really had this diagram until you went through this. Like completely accurately.
Bill, I think I heard you say that Ione was considering or at least exploring the possibility of sending water to the tertiary plant.
They have made that comment, yes, they are looking at some growth.
They don't have the ability to do that now.
So, yeah, I don't think there's a pipe that goes that way for them, they would have to put some infrastructure in. You can see there's a return pipeline that takes backwash back to their plant, they're not that far apart. And I'm not entirely sure whether a pipeline was put in, at least part of the way to get, bring the water back. Of course, the other problem is the plant doesn't have the capacity for it now.
They don't have the capacity to dispose of more either. I mean, the, the, we just stated that the Castle Oaks can't even, couldn't even take the 650 acre feet.
Right, they're closer to 400 and change, I believe. Yeah, 481, 423, so you can kind of see the Castle Oak demands here. And those were, according to Ione, pretty carefully studied and validated against some flow meter data that they had. So I think this is a number that's probably varied over time, what what is believed to be the value. And I think more work has been done now to pin that down. The only number we don't have is what if we looked at a really dry year, which isn't so much of interest to the Water Board, but it would be of interest if we're looking at making sure we have enough supply.
This, this analysis is done for the Water Board with a five year horizon. And so Ione has approved development, it goes beyond that five years. You know, so there's like a separate discussion they're having on what's the future plan for their plant, because their secondary plant's at capacity. So again, I think that's why they're, and they're also kind of talking about bringing on Woodward Bottom and other disposal areas to make all of this work, but there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts.
Bill, could you briefly explain this term backwashing? And is that standard procedure in this flow, or is it? If you could just speak to that for a moment.
Sure, yes, it it's standard for a filtration process. So the the filters at the Castle Oaks Water Reclamation Facility are basically filled with a sand media. And we're passing your secondary effluent through that media, and the media is capturing particles. Very solids that need to be filtered out, and those build up in the media over time. So you take a portion of the clean water that you just treated, and you run it backwards in the reverse direction through that filter bed to lift out all of that, all of those particles. And then you waste that away, you have to send that to a treatment process. And so the efficiency of a filter is the ratio of that backwash rate over the total capacity. And right now, this filter is running somewhat inefficiently. It's, it's rejecting 20% of the water that comes into the process to carry that backwash water out. You know, eventually that can be sent back to the plant, you know, if you wanted to, but it's going to be this continuous loop of of reject. So for a new continuous backwash filter, I'd expect that to be closer to 12% if it's properly sized.
One more question, Bill, the golf course demand is around, let's, let's call it 440, 450. What's the capacity of the Castle Oaks tertiary plant? Is it, is it, is that at its capacity?
Well, there's storage buffer on both sides, so you have Preston Reservoir. It can buffer flows before you go into the tertiary plant. And then when you go to the golf course, one of their ponds is a storage pond on site. So there will be, this is an annual average, there will be peak days where they take pretty much the full capacity of the plant. But I don't know of any, there's really not a bottleneck there. I don't think there's a lot of room to tertiary treat any more water than their demand is. But there is enough capacity for that, is my understanding.
Thank you, Bill, we appreciate all that information, it's pretty, pretty straightforward and easy to understand. So puts a good wrap in context in all that's involved, thank you.
Welcome, thank you for having me today.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to, are there any other comments or questions regarding Bill's report? Any community questions, comments? All right, moving on to item B, the capital improvement plan. I suggest we take, just because this could be for pretty intense, unlikely. I recommend we take just maybe a five minute break.
When we started?
Right now, but do you think it's best to miss the intro or the outro?
The what? Second paragraph, second sentence. Yeah, I just put it there to see if you'd find it.
Yeah, yeah.
I keep looking at this monitor up here and I see this guy at the end with his gray hair. Jim, how long do you get to be away?
Yeah, it's a nice. It's not a long, it's not a long flight. All that stuff. Exactly. Can't be going with it.
There's a voice.
Gold. Julia, do you want to get going? Do you want to start? Susan's coming back, but she's gonna miss. She's gonna come back, but we should, we should start without her.
Ice cream to be on.
Okay. That kind of turned off.
Well, it's on the market. We'll move forward. Susan took her daughter home, but she'll be back. And we'll move forward now with our capital improvement plan. I'm going to let Tom do the introduction.
Yeah, before, uh, I wanted to make a couple of comments before we get into the details. So, uh, you know, first, as the staff report explains, we, we need to have a capital improvement plan or CIP approved to justify and collect our development impact fees. So in the event that we have some development, we want to have this to be able to justify it. I've seen subsidies get sued and have to return those funds. Um, so we want to make sure we're, we're compliant on that. The other comment I'd make is this is a high level, five year plan. It will definitely change. It will be amended. It's, it's not, it's not correct, uh, you know? And it had to make a lot of
Not in cement.
It had to make a lot of assumptions and those assumptions are going to change over the years in terms of how much development actually happens. If we can get a grant in, in an air, in a project that maybe is, you know, on the back of this thing, we will, we will do that project if we can get the money for it. So, you know, I think the thing for council to focus on tonight is that we prioritize the projects based on our best guess of what you guys would consider is important. Those are the ones that show funding in the next five years. If we left something out, or you think one of those projects is not important and you want to swap it out for something else on the list, I think that's really useful feedback. Third thing to understand is the impact fees have to be spent in the category that generates them. So we can't charge a parks and rec impact fee and then spend that on streets. So part of the exercise here was making these assumptions, forecasting how much revenue we're going to get in each category and then applying that to projects. And I actually have some slides to make that more clear and show you how we did that. We also made some assumptions on the sales tax. And again, it's new. It's not to say, we assumed in this model that seventy-five percent of the sales tax would go to streets. And the other twenty-five percent would be used for matching funds for grants and storm drains, other things. That hasn't been decided and we'll have a separate session with council. I think specifically on the sales taxes part of our budgeting process. So don't get hung up on that tonight. You know, I'm promising you, we'll, we'll come back and talk about that on its own. I think the, the one thing that came out of it is we won't have enough money from the sales tax in the first year to fund a street project. And so regardless, I think if it was fifty percent or a hundred percent, we have some time to figure it out. We'll, we'll reserve that money and in the second year, you know, we will do a project. The fifth thing, there is an assumption in here of a hundred and fifty homes paying impact fees over the next five years. And, you know, the report called it out. If we don't have any development, we, we can't do the twenty-six projects that are shown in the next five years. It would drop down to like eight. And so I think that's a good discussion. Maybe we start it tonight. I think again, it kind of warrants its own discussion about what level of growth you think the community is comfortable with. So I, I just wanted to call that out. So let me, uh, let me share my screen. And I also want to say that Frank from WGA did a lot of work on this, uh, Dan as well. You know, kind of the three of us really spent quite a bit of time getting this thing shaped. I think it, I think it started a couple of years ago. And it took a while to kind of line up, line up the funding. So again, I was trying to think about how the best way to have this discussion would be. Sorry for a bit of the I chart, but this, this basically shows you the assumptions. So the top line there where it says five, ten, twenty, forty, that's the number of new single family homes. So we're saying there would be five homes um, in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So starting from, you know, July first of this year. Um, and it would ramp up. So we're assuming, you know, eighty homes in twenty-nine, thirty. And that this is how much it would generate in terms of impact fees um, in each of the categories. So you can see like in, in five years, the street impact fees would be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's roughly equivalent to what the sales tax would generate for streets um, in the first full year. Just to kind of give you a ballpark. Also, you can see
Wait a minute, Tom.
Yeah.
Say that again. What you
Our, our sales, if we did seventy-five percent of the local sales tax, that's about equivalent to eighty new homes a year paying impact fees for
Oh, at four hundred and fifty bucks or, or four hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And then you can see our park impact fees are quite large. So there are a lot of park projects, park and community facilities. And then this is just showing you the calculation on the local sales tax. And so again, this year it would start in April, so there'd only be three months. That's the hundred thousand dollars, hundred and eight thousand. We're just assuming that wasn't in our belt into our budget. We're, we'll just reserve that money this year. And then next year, um, we would have the four hundred and forty-three thousand.
If those numbers will come to fruition.
I mean, we looked at, you know, historically what the sales tax has been and, you know, that's, that's what it's based off of.
Okay.
So obviously we have to pay attention to the economy. It can go up, it can go down. So again, I, like I said, I, I think tonight is not so much about the details as much as like the overall plan, because there's a lot of it's pretty fuzzy.
So what do we, yeah. So what do we, are, are we here tonight to, to try to say, this is, this is number one? This is number two, number three? Are we going to go, go into that much detail or is this?
Um, I think it's really, so the impact fees are by category, right? So police fee, parks fee. So I think this next bit here would be to step through it by category and then get comments from you guys in terms of those priority projects. Based on these assumptions, we could fund them in five years with this amount of growth. Um, does that make sense to you guys? Is there something missing? So
That, that makes sense. The only, the only hang up is just the, the time involved. I mean, I've, I've gone through this, you know, linearly through page one through page eighty, whatever. But uh, if it was, if we were going to look at it by category, it would have been helpful to have a different format to be able to say. I mean, the table of contents, I think, is kind of divided up by streets.
It, it's kind of an order. So I, I actually, if you look at, um, you know, the table of contents, the priority project list, I, I suggest, you know, the police car fleet, there is a development impact fee for capital for the police department. We basically applied it to cars. That's one project here on the priority list. I don't know, I, hopefully that one's good. I don't think there's much really to talk about on that one.
Well, how mu- My, my overall in, in terms of prioritization, in looking at the priority projects and going through those and kind of coming up with guesstimate numbers. And then the appendix, say additional detail and future projects. Those are projects with undetermined sources of funding, correct?
They're beyond five years.
Correct.
If, unless we, you know, again, if we had a thousand impact fees, then we would do more projects.
Yeah. My, my concern is looking at some of those projects. Some of those projects should have, in my opinion, should have been within the five year. Because if you look at the projects identified, for example, um, Greenstone Terrace, um, that project and resurfacing that, that's like the first or worst street in the city identified. So when we have identified needs,
Yep.
not just by staff recommendation. To me, those should be moved up because those have been an identified need for, for years to come.
So Julia, if we could go, I, I was trying to knock off this police category. I think the next category is streets.
Okay.
Um, so we could go into streets, but I think if we, if we approach it that way, we can have a
And I think what Tom's got here, Julia, which is not in our packet, is he's going to show it up to us that way. That it's going to make it easier for us to see it by category.
Try.
Is that what you tried to do?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm
Right.
That's what would be helpful.
So again, what I'm saying here about the police, the, the capital for police is primarily vehicles.
But that's covered by the police impact fees.
Yeah, those impact fees are relatively small. So we just applied it to cars and that's what this line is.
And, and the only
So that's a wash.
The only issue I had with that is that it's not seventy-four thousand. It's something much greater than that.
Yeah.
And all the other categories, you had a line item that said where that's going to come from. In this, you just had a bottom total. So if it's unfunded, it ought to be put up there as unfunded.
It's not unfunded, it'd be a positive reserve. We're, we're not spending all the money.
Something, it's, but it's not in there currently in this thing. All you have is the bottom line saying, here's how much it costs.
Right.
In every other category, you showed that it's unfunded or something.
Right.
We should be consistent is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I was the only one that was, we'd actually have a reserve.
So the estimated project costs using, staying with this example of the police car fleet, the total capital costs are two hundred and forty-one thousand, but our financing is only seventy-four. So that's only a third.
No, that's seventy-four in the fifth year. Now, it's, yeah.
That's total impact fees over the years.
Yeah.
Seventy-four.
Correct.
It's total spent, not brought in.
But if the total, total capital costs are two hundred and forty-one thousand. So the method of, the method of
So if you take this first line where it says police impact fees, yes, if you add up those years, we would generate two hundred and forty thousand dollars of revenue to the city.
Okay.
We would spend seventy thousand and we would have a hundred some in reserve.
But, but that's what the assumption of ten, twenty, forty and eighty housing units.
Correct.
Which is maybe wildly over exaggerated.
Correct.
Do, do we need to tackle the, the, the elephant, the growth?
Yeah, so we, we can have that discussion. Again, this, this is serving two purposes. Uh, and one of it is to have the CIP on record so that we can do our next study for our impact fees. So from that point of view, you want to show you have a need for the funds. And then separate from that, we can say, you know, do we want this amount of growth? And are we going to spend this amount of funds? Does that make sense? I mean, there's kind of two purposes here. I think you want to be conservative on the ones, for the one purpose and maybe more pragmatic.
With the growth.
On what you
Considering what kind of growth.
Yeah. So if we, maybe let's dive into one that's a little more complicated, which would be the streets. So we kind of use the methodology similar to ACTC, which is not just what roads are the worst condition, but what are the worst condition that have the most traffic on them and are used the most? And that's where something like Greenstone Terrace fell off of this priority list. And something like Spanish Street is on. You could totally swap these out. You can see here that a combination of these impact fees plus the sales tax. Um, if you look at where the last box is, Sutter Hill Road, we would have the money available in twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's the year it would get built. And then Spanish Street stops in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So it would be built in that year. So what I'm saying is, you know, if you look, look at Spanish Street, we would start to save up money. And we would save money for two years. And then the third year, we would have the full seven fifty-seven and be able to do the project. So what's useful to us, I think, is to say, you know, do these streets look like the right ones? And if you want to put something else in, we can't just add it, we have to swap it out.
Right.
No, the, the projects are listed in here and, and this, this thing adds Yeah, this adds them all up and into one page, basically.
But yeah, this is helpful because it helps us see the going in priority. Recognizing that every year when we do budget, depending on what's happened or not happened in terms of growth, et cetera, et cetera, we're going to approve or not approve XYZ project. So it's really not in stone so much.
Right. I mean, each project
Starting place, yeah.
Yeah, they would, they would come back to you
It gets the
Essentially more than once for approval before we actually did one of these, but
Right.
Are you going to make these available?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I
Thank you.
So, uh, is there any questions or discussion on the, on the streets?
No, that was my only, uh, either need for clarification or express that some of the items in the beyond the five year program seem to have a higher priority or need based on an identified study or report rather than um, recommended by staff. Not to say recommended by staff isn't important because obviously it's, it's an absurd need. But um,
So a piece of, a piece of work for the future might be, see if this rings a bell, to go ahead and provide that background criteria that you used in addition to the CIP. Right, the, the condition of the, what's that, is that the right, what it's called? Not CIP, what is it for pavement?
Oh, the circulation
PCI.
PCI. Instead of, you know, the PCI is one thing. How many trips per day? Is it on an emergency route? Is it a safe schools route? You know, all those things. We can, we can show it. We don't have to do that today, but if, you know, we get that information sometime in the future. Then as we're having these discussions in real time, we can look at all that information. But it's good, it's good to know that, and I assume that, that there's more going into this than just
And then on this chart, the year that the project's fully funded, is that the year that it would begin? Or
Yeah, that, that would be the plan.
So, so how do we get to two million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars?
Yes, if you look at the, the detail on that one, we, we need a grant.
Okay, that.
It shows the unfunded.
I do remember reading that.
Right. It shows in the, yeah, in the individual projects, it shows anything that's unfunded.
Yeah, I, I, I did, I did see that.
Right.
So the other thing to call out, I guess, is, is kind of where we need to work together to go try to find some money, particularly when we get into wastewater.
Right.
I think that's one area where the council can really help. If we gotta go hit up Sacramento, if we gotta go wherever, uh, it's going to be kind of lining up the funding.
Right.
And that's another, I think, important piece of this five-year plan that kind of identifies the funding gaps.
Right.
Well, I think that the key to this is your five-year um, new home projection on whether we as a council want to work, obviously with our community to see, do, does the city want to grow? Do we want to go in this direction?
Right.
To pay for these improvements.
Right.
Measure M is going to be a drop in the bucket compared to what could potentially be brought in through impact fees by new homes, but it, I mean, measure.
Our new sales.
Measure P. What I, what did I say?
But yeah, like, but Tom was saying, that's a, we, we're going to have that discussion.
And I, I think it's fair.
But I think until we.
Tonight. I mean, if you guys, I mean, how, what do, how do you guys feel about again, that, that, that kind of growth? You know, we have an application right now for a hundred and fifty homes in the Gold Rush, which is basically, this is what we're modeling, right? And it's going to take them a number of years to build it out. And, you know, I wanted to show you guys what it would mean in terms of funding projects.
Right.
I'm, I'm more in favor of something like that than what was done over in the Golden Oaks area by kind of nickel and diming little housing projects that's going to bring in, you know, some money, but nothing like this. But it also has to be with the whole discussion of what services are a hundred and fifty homes going to need. You know, what's, do we have the capability um, for infrastructure, for water and sewer to be able to support that? Do we have schools to support that? I mean, there's a lot that goes on and whether we want to add a hun- yeah, let's go for a hundred and fifty homes, but.
Well, it's going to come to you guys this year, like approval of this project. So it, I think, again, starting this discussion.
Yes.
And getting the sense from you guys, if is this where we want to go or not, right?
And it's my feeling that if we want to approve that sort of project, that it should really be integrated to the community and not just some outlier little tiny suburb of Sutter Creek that isn't in um, line with our general plan of walkability and correct. That it, that people are ending up not even really coming to town or spending money here, that they're just really just commuting and it doesn't add to the beauty of Sutter Creek.
You're not going to interweave a hundred and fifty homes into the existing footprint of what you call Sutter Creek.
No, I get that, but as far as the direction and the vision of it, there's ways to do developments well and there's ways that they just become a they don't add to the vibe.
Right.
And I also think it's important that we as a council reflect to our community that if we want to go in this direction, it's not at the expense of leaving behind the needs of what we already have in terms of roads, streets. I mean, I mean, a lot of attention is going to go into this, but I just want to make sure that our community understands that it's an, it's, it's an addition to incorporate, not just separate. Am I clear in my rambling? I don't want to make it seem like we're leaving other issues behind and, and really moving into this, although I think it's important.
It's all, it's tied to, together. Their
Yeah.
growth and these services are inextricably tied together. And the community is going to make the decision about whether they can have the stomach for a hundred and fifty new homes over the next five years, yes or no. And we're going to get to that and we're going to have to get to that. And it's, we're not going to decide that. The community is going to decide that. Having said that, to get this CIP done, we at least have to build a model with some numbers, some assumptions. And that's how I see this. So, yeah, are there going to be five new homes next year? I don't think so. I mean, there haven't been in the last, how many years have we had five new homes in Sutter Creek? It's been a long time, I think. But, you know, so we could, you know, skinny it down in the front, backload it more. I mean, that's probably closer to reality. Does it matter um, a- at this point? I just don't know that it, that it matters.
Yeah, again, I think, I think what matters is do you approve a hundred and fifty home subdivision or not?
Well, but we're not going to approve that tonight, Tom.
No, not tonight.
And by, by approving this, we're not approving a hundred and fifty homes.
Correct.
We're saying we're approving a model that makes an assumption and then we're going to go ask the community.
Correct.
Are they, is this what they want? And if they don't, we're going to change it. That's what I think.
Are we?
Um, if you want to go to the public now, or do you want, so we, we can.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear from him because I was going to cite one of his, one of Mike's um, observations that we have areas of infill that haven't been built out, that are walkable, that would make the town not drastically larger, but possibly a more vibrant community by adding houses, like the lots that are, and I don't, we, I don't know how much control we have over market forces. I mean, a developer hasn't bought the land by Crestview Estates. But there is quite a bit of buildability that's available that's not being looked at and we're pushing it out. We're going to get, it's going to create more traffic. There are going to be whatever X amount of trips per car. So I think that we should, if, I would like to hear from Mike. I don't know if that was going to be your comment.
We could do a category at a time and go to the public each time. Yeah. Mike, is, is your mic on? Are you on?
Oh, I am now. Thanks. You already approved, the city already approved fourteen hundred and forty homes and all this grandiose thing. Yeah, I think what you have to look at in your growth, and I think Dan alluded to it, what ha- historically have we seen? We, we don't know if, if, even if the hundred and fifty home subdivision gets approved, you don't know if it's going to build out. Uh, we don't have the same dynamics that are driving El Dorado County and Folsom. But I will tell you one thing, Folsom, with all their development fees that you're counting on here, they had to raise their sales tax too because they can't afford to run the city on all that development. So I think you have to be very careful. I, I did an internet search today. Do developments fees save your city? And an AI thing popped up, absolutely not. So be careful of relying on development fee projections to get to where, where you want to be. In addition to that, all the work that needs to be done in the city right now has nothing to do with development. It's deferred maintenance is what it is. You haven't been paving roads. You don't have the money to pave roads. And I get it. Ever since Prop thirteen passed, there's not enough property tax. And with the poor percentage you get right now for your property tax base, it doesn't, you don't have it. The, your mantra should be for new subdivisions, CFDs. You have to establish CFDs in new subdivisions. And I, I gave Tom what Plymouth did for Zimvendale. They're getting like an additional nineteen hundred dollars a year per home in Zimvendale to support all your services for the, for the, for their city. Go online and look how many CFDs are out there in cities. If you're not pursuing this, I'm on the planning commission. If a hundred and fifty lot comes to me, I may say, yeah, I'm in favor of this, but you better have a CFD because our general plan says no new development that doesn't pay its way. And you're not, development isn't paying its way. If you create CFDs, it will. The fire district did it. Any new lot developed is, is creates a CFD, they pay another six hundred dollars. That's more than you get on a seven hundred thousand dollar home. You get two hundred and eighty dollars. So you better kind of cool the jets on the, on the mitigation fees and start talking CFDs for new development. So.
Well, it's not one or the other, I don't think.
No, you're going to have both. You're going to have both.
And right now, we're talking about the CIP.
But again, your, your growth is going to be tied to demand, not what you approve on a map.
Of course.
Yeah. And then the other thing, if you're getting into roads, I, I'm glad that, I, I do agree with the the condition of the road and the amount of traffic. When I'm looking at one of your projects right now, I'm trying to give you some, what my thoughts are. I don't think Keys and, and, and Hayden Alley gets a lot of traffic. So I don't know if I would make those a priority. I think Five Field is a connector to, to Spanish, it might be. But the, the big one is Main Street. It's degrading. I don't know when your plan is to start doing work on Main Street. Well, forty-nine.
Thank you, Mike. I think that's kind of what I was getting at is how much attention are we paying to this? And it, would it be at an expense of something that already exists?
So I think the comment about, again, impact fees are to mitigate growth and add new stuff. And then operational fees, CFD, that's part of the Gold Rush specific plan. That's, that's your year-to-year operational cost. It, it's not one or the other. It has to be kind of both. Yeah, so I think, you know, when we, when we get back to the streets, I don't know, we can continue going to the next category and then we can circle back if, if there's no other comments on. You know.
No, except that we're going to continue to rely on the assumption that there's going to be a hundred and fifty new homes throughout this.
So again, that's for the plan.
Assumption.
That justifies the next study.
Yeah.
To set our impact fees. None of these things are budgeted for unless we, the impact fees come in. So again, with zero development, I guess, I think we can use the sales tax. We can do about eight projects over the next five years. That, that would be the choice.
Yeah. I wasn't saying one way or the other. I was just.
Yeah. And then, you know.
The assumption continues.
Right. And there was, there was a lot of assumptions behind streets and this was already a hundred and fifty-page-long report. So we didn't, we didn't spell out all the assumptions and everything, but you know, on Main Street, again, there is an assumption we can continue to get some money from ACTC. Main Street is one of the streets that qualifies on their list. So we were trying to fund streets that they would never do.
Right.
So.
But let me go on the record as saying that ACTC has said that they're not inclined to do that because of the money Caltrans gave Sutter Creek to maintain Old Highway Forty-Nine and that money was not used for that. So that's going to take some doing to change their mind.
Yep. Should, should we move on at this point?
I think so. I mean, I, it's not, again, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it because I know it's just a model and that kind of thing. It's just, and if we don't have a CIP plan, then we're in trouble on a number of levels. And I don't think we want to not get that done.
I wanted to ask one question about the, about Spanish Street. We added an option to put a sidewalk in. Um, trying to get just general feedback if you guys are for that or against that.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the things, and I mentioned this to Tom and it's, it doesn't, it doesn't answer the sidewalk thing, Dan, but Spanish Street, as you know, at the bottom goes like this. And in the middle, that's higher than existing sidewalks. So none of the work that's being estimated at this point has tear out and regrading, which if and when we ever pave the bottom of Spanish Street, I mean, I'm not a street guy, but I don't see how you just keep going higher and higher without read, having to redo everything. So some of these numbers could be really off. If, if in fact, that's a real thing, Frank, is that, wh- when you look at it, I mean, that's your world. What do you think?
I mean, we need topography and all that to verify.
Okay, yeah. But I mean, just eyeballing it. I live on Upper Spanish. And you know, there's pictures of the house from a hundred and fifty years ago. And the front of my house is this much higher on the street than it was a hundred and fifty years ago. And, and then you just, you can't keep doing that forever, I don't think. I don't know, Dan. So anyway, uh, so you know, there's that and then sidewalks. Yeah, we talked to, talked to people and see, you know, some people are going to want them, some people.
A lot of kids use that walk.
Yeah, it's a safe route to school. So, you know, we, and we have it on the, the one side, but only from Badger up. Uh, because that was a Safe Routes to School project about fifteen years ago, I think. Or, or more. I forget when it was.
And so, and again, I, I want to say we're showing, you know, two point seven million for Gulf of Flat. That's for the CIP. You know, when we get into it, it becomes a priority from council. Maybe we look at if we can do it in a cheaper way or have some other alternative.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not saying this is the only path, right?
Yeah, I think a lot of these street projects, when I look at them, we don't necessarily need to go from one end of the street to the other. Some of them, there's like Amelia Street, it's not on the list, but it, it's on the lower end of it, right down from your office. There's like one-third of it is just terrible. And the upper two-thirds, it's not that bad.
That's right.
So some of these things could be done less expensively than possibly the estimate.
I, I think my overall question is like, do you like, does the council like how the roads are? Like, I know there's a lot of people that walk around this town. And so would you be more inclined to have better walking areas? Like, is that something you would want to prioritize to put your money behind?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's dangerous walking around here.
Yeah, but I, I think that could be done.
That's what I kind of see. So I, but I just wanted, I want to make sure that we're kind of aligned with the priorities of you guys.
Yeah.
To, to add those two if, if we need to. I mean, we won't do it everywhere, but.
I also think that, that that can be done with, with asphalt and not necessarily.
Concrete sidewalks.
Concrete sidewalks.
So we can talk about that, yeah.
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 I mean, I walk down Broad Street all the time and most of the time there's, we walk along, on the street, not on the sidewalk.
Yeah, each street's different.
Is the intersection of Boston Alley and Randolph in this picture at all? I've walked past there. I walked past there today and that's just, it's just a wreck. And it's, it's been a mess. I mean, there's a, there's a drain that's still got water in it. There's a rut about four or five inches deep, right smack in the middle. But I don't know if that is a project to be on here or it's something that just through public works needs to be addressed sooner and out of safety.
I don't, I don't really know what that is. So maybe I'll, I'll, I'll go walk that, figure out what it is.
Yeah, please do.
Let's, let's maybe move forward.
But now I think maybe we're getting into details that really aren't applicable to this con- conversation about just getting the CIP in place, the model in place.
I, I just want to commend. So that's what I needed to know and just question. I mean, if we're looking at things to take off or move on or anyway, but I, I do want to commend Tom, Dan, his staff, Mason, for putting yeoman's work and being able to put this together. It's very commendable that we have a working project. So.
It's a great report.
Yeah.
It's great work. It really is.
So just, you know, this is the facility impact fees getting summarized in a table. You know, with the solar stuff, we've been talking to firms and told you before, seeing if we could get unbilled financing or other grants. It's, it's getting harder, but, so these are on here using these facility impact fees. If we do get grants, uh, we use them. I think Jim pointed out, this one says windows for the auditorium. I think the windows are fine. It was really more insulation and HVAC.
Right.
Was the big one. You know, and on the, on the long list, there's like a new city hall that, that's not a priority, that, that's not funded in the next five years. This one is the parks and rec fee. And again, it's parks, but also community centers.
Right. This is one that I personally had a difference of opinion in terms of prioritization, specifically as it relates to getting some. specifically as it relates to getting some bathrooms up at the park up there versus anything before that. I think that's a park that's been sitting up there unusable for years. And if we have any money, let's get some, get, get that bathroom. It's an eighty thousand dollar job estimated, I think, per year projections or something. You know, it's up, it's up there, it's years later. Where, where is it? Or is it, is it year two?
It's the second year.
Oh yeah, so it's not that far out, actually.
Right.
Tom, this is good, how, how you did this.
And, I mean, I actually think, I've seen bathrooms cost a lot more.
Me too.
And we've had, we've had, you know, vandalism issues, and so that might be a low estimate, I don't know.
Yeah. So you know, you got the Monteverde rehab thing.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a tenant in there.
Right.
HVAC is broken at this point.
Yeah.
We have the, the wall, the Knights Foundry that the creek is washing away, and there's buildings at risk.
And these are park fees, yeah?
Yeah.
So what's in there now? What's in the bank?
Didn't you say, was it one point two million?
No.
Wasn't that...
No, I mean, it's, right now, it's like, it was a trade-off between these pavers versus the bathroom. And...
And that's, so that's year one. What's, is that a, is there a total for that column? That can't be done without some number of houses paying impact fees, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So of all of those, council, you might look at that and say, well, if we have eighty thousand bucks or something like that up there, what do you want done next year?
Yeah, what is the one thing?
I, I would say get those bathrooms done at the Bryson Park. The rest of it, we can work out down the road.
Along with the...
Yeah, that's...
I think that's more of a grant.
Yeah, no, and, and... No, and I was, I had a...
See, we're near, we're near finished with Department of Taxology. It would be good to finish that off. The, the views up there are pretty amazing. We did walk around where this kind of scenic trail would be. But again, we're not, we're not, this is not an approved project, we're just saying, you know, if we have development, the parks fee is quite large, actually generates a number of fees. So we wanna show some projects, or we should lower the park impact fee.
Right.
Right.
Exactly, put it somewhere else.
I would prefer to have more projects than lower the fee.
If we can continue with this, with this list, it's actually, I think, a good balance between, you know, the history restoration and maintenance, as well as growth and being able to support our parks that are already existence. The Parkland acquisition is that, I, I would put the restroom at Bryson Park above the Parkland.
Yeah, and it's in year five, and again, we're kind of straddling a line here, you're supposed to use these impact fees to mitigate growth and to add things like new parks. Yeah, we can't just do maintenance for the...
Would that be something if I press you in that property up there?
The Ora Madre property, I think she's talking about.
Could be, but again, it's, it's kind of a plug in year five to say, if we had all this growth, would we... Maybe it's not a park, maybe it's a walking trail to town, maybe we have to buy some easements.
Well, if, if a walking trail to town can be paid for by these fees, I would be looking at a, a walking path to town from both Mount Pleasant and from Sutter Hill. For all those people that live up in those places, there's already a path there. It would make, it would take some improvements to get either a sidewalk, some crosswalks, this or that.
There's...
But let me finish, please. But for the bang for the buck and the number of community members who've lived up there for years with only dangerous access to town, it would be a really important thing that's not on the list.
What, where did I read, and I'm, I'm sorry, Dan, I was trying to merge in and agreeing with that. I think at one time, what is it called, Johnson Property? And I think it's somewhere in here, there is a project...
That's a detail.
Yep.
They can work that out. The thing is, do we wanna get that up there or not? Not how we're gonna do it, or whose property, or anything else.
But again, we're talking about prioritization.
Yeah, do we think that's a priority?
And in that walking trail, if there can be a way for this proposed development where Gold Rush was going to be, for those people to then tie in and walk to town? Because without, some way to get to town without the automobile, I think that's such a bad idea.
Exactly.
It'll really just hurt us.
Exactly. And if we prioritize that path from those two neighborhoods over the next few years and get that done, then if and when Gold Rush or the next one comes, they have something to aim for, something to connect to.
And then we're setting any development after that and beyond it to that this county is walkable and not just anywhere USA that you gotta get in your car.
So now we get to the easy one, wastewater stuff.
I think all that stuff's overrated, and I don't understand what the big deal is.
Yeah, so this is...
Mike, porta-potties for everybody. Porta-potties for everybody.
Cheaper.
So this is...
I don't wanna read that in the paper.
Yeah.
Porta-potty discussions.
So this first slide is, again, looking at all the revenue that would come to the city. So the top row is based on that growth, those would be connection fees. We have, we've been building up our reserves, anticipating, we got some projects. And then the rate forecast is what the residents would pay over that time. Wholesale customers, Amador City, Martel. And then there's an assumption of twenty-five million of debt financing issuing a bond. And then, again, right now, we're working with kind of a range of forty to fifty million. And so there's a, a need for, for grants as well. And then, you know, Dan and I talked quite a bit about, okay, we have, you guys probably saw the pages of all the equipment at the wastewater plant. We need to decide, are we gonna build a new plant, or are we gonna, you know, fix our existing plant? So some of those things are pushed out several years with the idea that if we are on a path to a new plant, we will try to avoid doing those and do a new plant instead. So it's not to say we necessarily do all of these things, but...
I think that's a good strategy, pushing out whatever you can until the last minute.
Yep.
Once, give ourselves a chance.
So then, then you just need to prioritize your Band-Aids?
Exactly.
So there were a lot of projects there, I don't know if you guys had any questions about any of those?
Yeah, I would just say most of those projects are fairly large-term. And if we are going down the path of getting a new wastewater plant, we will not probably do most of them. I would say, we might do one of them, you know, but it'll only be if it breaks and we can't fix it.
Right.
And we feel it's gonna be, again, exhausted in five years, you know? Because we don't wanna buy a whole new piece of equipment for five years of life.
The line titled wastewater treatment plant upgrade. That's not an upgrade of the existing plant, we're talking about...
New plant.
It's a new plant, yeah.
How much concern is there with the water board order and the permitting that will run into a problem?
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big concern. Especially if they put a new order out for us, that'll mean a lot more testing, a lot more constituents will have to test for much, much higher frequency in everything, monitoring, all that stuff. So that's probably gonna come regardless of whether we get out of the ARSA board or we just go with our water plant, because when we have our new plant, we're gonna need a new permit also. So it's probably gonna be a reality, no matter what we do, we just kinda have to be ready for it.
So that we have a proposed site?
We, we're thinking that with our limited funds, that it might be in the same place as before. If that doesn't work, then it'll be up on the hill.
Or Badre.
Yeah, but then we have to pump, we have to pump water uphill. And also there's some smell, we have to make sure we don't get going into the, the houses. So that's not the, the preferred location, but at least it's viable location.
It does seem like, again, energy usage is gonna be a big part of this, of solar. Everybody we're talking to is talking about solar. So what I kinda see is the wastewater stuff where the current plant is, maybe some solar in some of that newer area.
Yeah, in that newer area, yeah. It, it'll really, really depend on how we design the new plant because where certain equipment is, we won't be able to take some things out and put new pieces in. So it's gonna get a lot more complicated. We're gonna have to really work with our design team to, to make sure that we're, we have a good plan moving forward. So we don't shoot ourselves in the foot.
So I think, I think that was, that's really it, that's all the categories.
So, street projects, city, park, community centers, and the wastewater plant. What do you need from us from...
I, I think we, I guess a, a motion to adopt the, the CIP, either as-is or with modifications.
I'd like to see the modifications, the ones, the specific ones, if council agrees on some of those priorities that we talked about. Particularly, I'm, I'm talking about the walking trail from the two subdivisions up, up the top of the hill. And on the city parks, impact fees. And then what was the other one you guys?
Bathroom.
And the bathroom.
And did we agree that the Key Street and Hayden Alley rehab could be pushed back? That's on the, that's one, two, three, that's number four on the priority projects?
For me, those seemed like it made sense to have them as a top priority because they're such an integral part of our main street and the tourism, and I, I use them all the time, actually.
It also allowed us to get something done for a lesser buck than a big, a big project.
And they're pretty bad, and people use them for walking as well as driving.
And the other thing is, I'll remind council that any of this stuff, when we actually do the budget process, we can mix and match and do what makes sense at the time. I don't think we need to be overly concerned with that.
So you could, again, you could, you could pass, you could approve the CIP with those changes?
Yeah.
Or you could have it brought back for review at another meeting?
So if the council's comfortable, I mean, I would make a motion to approve the CIP with the modifications that we just discussed. With those three modifications.
I, I would like to just see...
Is that your motion? Can I interrupt one second?
Yeah.
Before you make the motion, that with those, the modifications include putting Amelia Street on the, on Appendix A and Boston and Randolph.
Adding them to Appendix A.
Just so they're on there.
Sure, that's great.
For the record.
Yeah, that's great, Jim.
So if I could play that back to you?
Please.
We will, you know, probably substitute the park acquisition with the walking trail. Or, I mean, we'll build it in to that existing financing. And then you wanna move...
Hold on, I'm, I'm sorry, let me make a modification to that if I can. If there's a way to, because the acquisition doesn't happen until year five. So if there's a way to fit it in sooner, I would ask you to please see if you can make that happen.
Okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, so the timing and the use of funds, I'm just trying to identify where it comes from.
Yeah, of course.
And then, same thing, I think what you're asking for with the bathroom is about timing and not about the dollars. So we would swap it around?
Right, I think it could move into year one if I looked at those numbers correctly.
And all the other projects would push out.
Yep. And then the addition of the three streets that Jim mentioned into Appendix A, please.
Okay.
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve with the modifications, the CIP plan. Moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay? Motion passes unanimously. Well done, team. Well done, thank you again, Tom, Dan, Mason, and all those that aren't here.
Yeah, thank you.
Frank, for all your contributions and time and energy.
Yeah, it's really good work.
It's good to see a project that, Jim's been here longer than we have, but that we've been waiting years and years for. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, moving on, mayor and council member reports. I have no report. Dan?
Nothing right now.
Jim?
No.
Susan?
No.
All right. City attorney's report, Derek. No report. Future agenda items, members. Are there any requests for future agenda items? And council? Future agenda items, Susan?
Not at this time.
None?
We bore you down.
Information and correspondence, I have none. Tom, do you have any?
No.
All right, at this time, I'm going to move into closed session and ask those in the public to take a break. And we'll take a break and convene in five minutes.